Thirty-two, uh, is these good to be here should be a little late. Uh, go ahead and get started. Uh, public comments, but we don't have any public, so we'll pass on that. Um, general review, I've got, I've got a non-public there. Okay, um, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing at six thirty-four and I'll ask the board if you have any questions or comments in the way of the talk focus. And so I guess just in case, um, I'll leave this open for like fifteen minutes and we'll just continue with the agenda, but if anybody shows up that wants to speak, we'll give them the opportunity.
I did mention we usually discuss the public notice, so you're required to have a public notice in the paper for seven days prior to the public hearing. So there was a copy of that in your drive and we did meet that requirement as well.
So can you help us just sort it in the main? Uh, so move on to item five, which is being sent. Can I just interrupt here? I meant to say this one needs a general review, but I noticed there were no minutes from the last meeting in here, so.
We usually, those, we usually do those at the business meeting and the first meeting of the month, that is intentional.
Very.
Thank you.
Thanks. Oh, we got one consent item, field trip.
You have your annual request for the Three Rivers Washington DC trip. Uh, this year it is April twenty-second to Friday, April twenty-fifth. And Katie's here, if you have any specific questions about that trip, but it's similar to every year.
Any questions? As I was saying discussion last time, not pricing really.
Yeah, we're still there on that, we have money to offset the cost. I haven't determined that yet.
Everyone said you may email it out. I forgot, sorry, I think this one made it up some way. All right, any other questions or comments on the DC trip? There are motion to move. So moved. Second.
I'll second.
Last few questions or comments, but um, maybe, uh, uh, maybe we should explain, Ken, I don't know if we've done this before with the field trip and everything like that. Um, because not everything is set in stone yet. So what we do is we approve it now so they can move forward with the planning and everything. Um, just, you know, per your intention, that's all.
Yeah, they usually come up twice, usually when it come up initially, we kind of say, yep, go forward with that and then they come back with hard numbers and then we backfire again.
We started doing that because there were a couple of international trips planned. Um, and in years, in years past, there were issues with insurance and some tag, so the board asked that before a whole lot of planning is done, that they, that those are brought for them. So this one is a pretty standard every year request.
Six G.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
Because I guess I linked that really, really fast. Um, I'm assuming the school nurse is going to, she's just not listed there. Okay.
So, okay, anybody else? All right, then, all in favor of approving the Washington DC trip, you say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Okay. Um, right, um, we're one of the, and I try to page some, um, I'll just interrupt the whole set of the hearing. Um, so we'll go ahead with six A with both presentations and whatever order makes sense to me.
So we had started a few years ago, the, it's easier for us to have the building numbers ahead of time. And it's a lot for the board to get the full budget at once, so we started backing up our timeline a little bit. So that you have a night to just get the building numbers that your principals put in. And that way you get to hear about the building needs before going to the end of the budget and seeing that number that just makes everyone panic typically. Um, so we'll take some time, each principal will go over their lines, we'll just probably highlight where there are changes. Uh, a lot of the lines stayed pretty level and we, you know, only, again, as Amber reminds you, we do zero-based budgeting, so we start, we start with zero and put in for what we need in each building. So we've had several meetings, principals have their numbers in, so if there are zeros, it just means that those are numbers we don't have yet. And you'll get the full budget with all the numbers populated at your first meeting in November. So do you want to start with, which one do you want to start with?
Um, doesn't matter, I just got a couple of quick notes again, just because I don't know what you know and what you don't know, Ken. Um, so a couple of quick things on this, so obviously with a bunch of lines at zero, because they're not building lines, the kind of totals don't matter right now. Um, the other thing is when you look at the budget, you probably figured this out, if you look at like the first three lines are all teacher salary. Um, we'll see the second to last set of numbers in the account code, one oh four, two oh five, three oh six, one oh four is whole school, two oh five is TRS, three oh six. And I thought maybe you would, um, uh, there's one other thing.
Is the column number?
Oh yeah, okay, yep, line numbers are in the middle, which is annoying, but that's the way the system does it.
Yeah.
And we'll go ahead and um, make sure that this is available on the website too, we'll kind of continue to do that throughout the budget process. As a side rule, I did make the Facebook page, I was logged into a day and it turns out, I don't know how to use Facebook anymore. So if there's somebody, like I saw Deerfield has a page, if there's somebody in that, so you, that's actually good at it, I will meet with them and they can give me a little tutorial, unless one of you guys is, and I'll hand it off to you, because like, I made it as a, as a regular page on a business page and I fixed that, but I can't figure out how to do anything there, so.
The chair uses it all the time.
Okay, cool. I will reach out to her then to make it actually work, but it's, it's alive, I got the password reset, Josh helped me with that today. Um, so minimal progress, but progress still. Okay, I don't care which word, I guess we can start at Hill. See, this is first, nice one hundred number.
I'll go first. Um, okay, so um, like Patty said, quite a few, quite a few of these things have kind of stayed around the same. Um, so I'll go through and just highlight anything that has a change up or down and then anything of note to share, um, and then answer any questions. Um, so the first one to start off with is seven substitute salaries. We didn't make a change on that, but what I wanted to share with you is we've made some changes to scheduling our IEP meetings to try to prevent the need for substitutes, also because we're trying to protect instruction. So hopefully that's number is something that we're able to remedy and that's why we didn't increase it. Nine twenty-nine on page two. Um, repairs for instruments. Um, Ms. LaRose went through, kind of audited everything and took a look at what we would need and priced out how much it is for each trumpet, flute, clarinet. So that would be the number to repair what we're anticipating for next year. Currently PALS has supported us this year in getting all the repairs that we needed. Um, line thirty-eight, electronic software licensing on page three. The, there's an increase there, fifteen hundred dollars. A lot of the programs we use, they've all decided they want to charge just a little bit more. So for example, Mystery Science typically has been about fifteen hundred, went up to two thousand this year. Um, and then each of those programs support the curriculum that we have um, in all grades K four. Uh, line forty-four on page four, general supplies. Um, that's an increase because our lamination is running out, that came over from Village when we closed. So this is going to be the first year we've needed, we need to buy elimination and as you can see, we just kind of broke out what the costs for everything would be for that one. Line forty-seven, math supplies, this is a decrease. Um, or will be, yeah, will be a decrease in that line because um, sorry, it's a, it looks like it's a decrease in that line, we spent a ton of money in ESSR funds over the last several years. So I think last year it was like twelve or thirteen thousand dollars from ESSR funds. We don't need that amount anymore because we built up what it is that we have for our math needs. So this year it's about forty-two hundred and that's for math manipulatives, anything we need to support our curriculum. So that had been something that had been covered heavily through ESSR funds. Line fifty, supplies for reading, you'll see that is a significant increase too. Again, that's been something that we funded as we made our curriculum shifts in response to a lot of the science of reading stuff um, through ESSR funds. And this is, the biggest piece of this is getting the workbooks that we need to support our phonics instruction, our literacy instruction, uh, those two. But that had been previously funded through ESSR. Um, line fifty-five on page five, supplies for computers, that's an increase because we moved from computer parts over to here. So there's general supply parts and um, supplies for computers and computer parts will come back into this line. And also because um, the, the length of the Chromebooks is a little bit longer than what had been previous, we anticipate needing more parts and possibly not as many Chromebooks. Um, next line is page eight, or is line eighty-two on page seven? This is that computer parts that I just shared with you, so that line, we took the money out and moved it over to computer supplies. Um, pit line eighty-five on page seven, infrastructure, this was Josh shared with us that we have been putting off a server replacement at Hill School. Um, unfortunately, the price went up pretty significant, because I think we've been putting it off for two years. Um, so the price of that one, I believe, is five thousand dollars now. And then the backup is now at seven thousand, so those are things that we have been putting by the wayside. And I think he's saying they're about time we need to replace those.
Sorry, what one was that?
Oh, yep. Eighty-five, yep, I can slow down if you need me to. Um, line eighty-eight on page eight. That is um, the increase because that's the Scholastic News that we use K four, we cut that um, at the end of last year. So that's something that is very missed, um, so we've put it here for next year. Line ninety-four, books for reading, you're going to see a significant increase there. Again, that one is because we've been funding a lot of those pieces through ESSR funds for the past several years. Um, we need to replace the books that are in our classrooms that get used with our modules. They are heavily used and very well read, but so we need to make sure we have a replacement cycle, it's specific books that get used at each grade level. And then you'll see something called a Geodes class set. That is a set of books that specifically align both our literacy, reading and writing curriculum to our phonics foundations curriculum. It combines them together, um, and it's kind of like the bridge between the two. We currently have them um, through grades K through two, we purchased those through ESSR, third grade will be available for purchase next year.
Just interrupt for a second, um, we have a educational materials trust on, right? Um, I don't know what's in there right now, so maybe you could look at that and offset a little bit of it.
Yeah, we talked, Wendy and I actually talked about that when we were doing the project, there's like fifty thousand dollars. I mean, the worry is always you offset it and the next year it comes back anyway, but I mean, if there's significant increase, we have to look at the budget whole wrong.
Yeah, that's why I said.
I think what we're, what I'm just making sure is that you see what it is that we need to keep those particular programs up and running. Um, the next one is on page eleven, line one hundred and forty. A few years ago, we replaced classroom rugs in grades two through four. That was something that was, that we had proposed last year that was cut, so we're looking to replace the classroom rugs in K one. Um, they're nearing their end of their sanitary life, so we would like to get new ones if possible. Um, page twelve, line one hundred and forty-five, replacement computers, that's a significant increase because um, it was cut the previous year. So this is getting us back on our replacement cycle for our Chromeboxes. I think we officially have one of our first TVs that we purchased five years ago are already starting to end of life, so those are going to need to be replaced coming up on that cycle.
And just to clarify, they're not TVs to watch.
Yeah, no, they're the whiteboard to touchscreen, yes, I know, we have them on our TVs. The next one's on page seventeen, it's a special education, line two twenty-eight. Um, you'll see an increase there in that one, so we need a specific chair to support a student. So that was the increase on top of our testing materials or basic supplies for special education. Page twenty-nine, line four oh eight is medical supplies. Um, small increase there, just because we need a new thermometer. The ones they gave us for COVID were not hybrid and have officially no longer working. Uh, page thirty-one, you'll see curriculum development, line four thirty-six. There isn't an increase to this one, but I just want to point out that that's a really important one for us to do a lot of the um, we meet every other week with what we call our student-centered learning team and we do a ton of work on how to help support our students instructionally and it can really give us a boost, so that's a, a big priority. Some, summer curriculum work, teachers will come in and then that's also how we fund our kindergarten summer assessments, where we bring the kiddos in. Um, so that's a pretty important one for us. Um, next line would be, uh, page thirty-five, line four eighty-seven. That's an increase because the library is in need of a replacement scanner, I think we've put it in for the last couple of years and it's one of the first things on the chopping block. So we've put that back in as a need. Something to do with the barcodes, like they only read certain barcodes and we have two different barcodes and we need to be able to read all the different barcodes. And then page forty-one, line five hundred and ninety-one. This is other assignment stipends, there's an increase to this, um, we're proposing, our special education team later stipend, um, is two thousand dollars. We're looking to possibly increase that to two thousand and five hundred dollars, um, that role does a lot within our building. I think. We just have one more on page fifty-one, line seven hundred and fifty. This is field trip expense. Um, we're still proposing a thousand dollars per grade level, but I, I would just be remiss if I said that doesn't cover the cost of pretty much anything anymore. So for Strawberry Bank, for fourth grade going, their bus takes the thousand dollars, so two buses and they take it. So that's something that we are reaching out to families to help uh, offset the cost. Um, no child will be turned away ever to go on a field trip at this, so we will have, the PALS will help out, things like that. But I, this is just kind of to get everyone bussing to at least one field trip and then we'll figure out the cost going in.
Can you add a note to that line versus one thousand per grade level that this is only partial, partial funding?
And I think that's pretty much it for the school. Of any notable changes or anything that I felt was important just to kind of bring out.
Thank you. Any initial questions for Wendy? This is, we'll be living in for the next couple of months, so don't have to think about it now, but.
We tried to figure out how to filter out the lines, the building lines, but we can't, we even reached out to other districts, so unfortunately the whole budget prints. It's a lot.
We could, yeah.
Which trust did you mention?
I think it's.
For materials.
Yeah. And just to stay on the same track there, um, you know, Josh, every year requests money to go into uh, the building maintenance, whatever. It usually covers flooring and stuff like that, um, so you're looking at the roads that possibly could be covered in that. And then as far as the computers.
I think our technology trust is doing pretty well, is that something that would go, well, I mean, for the server.
I was thinking that.
Yeah, and maybe the uh, the TVs, uh, something, because that, that's not like massive numbers of coal, so it's just, you know, a couple of batteries, so.
I was thinking the same thing, I'm running all of those special education, flying the chair.
Yeah.
The stipend, any of that, depending on whether it numbers, maybe it'll be great if you don't make that one work.
Well, then.
It's good to keep things in mind, though, that we can go back to. Yep.
Any other questions about Hill?
I may have missed this at the very beginning because I was just trying to get my mindset on what I was doing. Um, so looking at this, it doesn't look like we're putting any of the teaching positions that we got rid of back in, is that correct?
We didn't put any positions in.
Okay, so that's not, okay, I might have, like I said, I might have missed that part.
We're working on rosters and all of, all of the fringe that goes with those, and Amber will have those in.
Thank you, sorry.
Anything, already?
Um, well, you, you don't have an election meeting, so.
Want to follow up on that really quickly, because in this, we can, we can involve this question later. But one of the questions I had, going through all of this, with all of the positions that were listed in the perfected these zero have.
Yep.
Is that, have you just pulled that up early, do those eventually go back in or are we putting those in a totally different budgetary conversation?
We haven't, sorry. Um, we haven't given Amber any direction on what we're going to do with those yet. Uh, I'm not sure if she has them in or out, I suspect she has them out and we would bring information to have conversation and then if we decide to put them in, we would add them in.
Everything is out, right, so as far as I'm telling, nothing was in there.
Yep.
And it's, provide a clarification to know if we were just creating this differently this year or if they eventually make their way back in.
Yeah, no, that's, and that's what Patty mentioned towards the beginning, we kind of, it, two, three years ago, um, it was just, we knew we weren't going to be able to get the budget until later than we usually started working on it. And we said, well, can we at least get like this stuff, like the admins workout? And then that worked out really well, so that's, so all the positions come with Amber on the next time around. And then this is kind of just the specific stuff that they need for instruction in one manner.
I'm pretty sure that, I, I'm pretty sure that what populates automatically in here is the current salaries. So I don't think this would include stepping people and we haven't put all of that in yet, yet, so you can't really go by what's in there at the moment.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I think that conversation as far as personnel, maybe possibly adding personnel is going to come way down the road when we feel, when we see what the budget is like fleshed out, see what we have to work with, so.
Yeah, we typically bring um, our staffing and then have a separate spreadsheet for, you know, what adding a teacher would do with the budget if you planned for position and benefits.
Other questions, comments? Okay, thank you, um, we'll take a quick break to close the public hearing at six fifty-seven. And if there's a motion, we can take action on the Gator request.
So it's closed?
Yep.
Motion to approve the Gator request.
All right, sir, second.
Could you, the link, draw the motion to withdraw the funds from the.
Yeah, what she said. I'm really.
A motion to approve the withdrawal of the thirteen thousand nine hundred thirty-one dollars from the equipment trust for the purchase of a Gator.
There you go.
That's what he done.
Actually, yeah, I, I'm standing in the box, yeah. Was there a second, all right, any other conversation about that? All in favor of approving the purchase of using funds from the trust fund, you say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, any exceptions? Awesome, um, TRS.
I'm just gonna. I'm just gonna keep thanking you and I know it makes you embarrassed, but I have to do it because Katie had never done budgeting. Um, and she literally had one tutorial and I think maybe a couple of calls to Dan to come over, but she just jumped into this and put all her numbers in herself, figured all of this out with the front office staff, so I just thank you, you're welcome.
Um, so I think my lines are very similar to Wendy's, um, and you'll kind of see similar information as far as, you know, why they increase or decrease. Um, so just to, to start, um, so first line is line number eight, our substitute line, um, we did decrease that. Um, it's really hard to get subs, especially at the middle school level. Um, so we're, you know, not even making it to the amount that we typically put in there, um, so we did decrease that, um, just to match what we're actually spending in that line. Um, line number thirty-one, repairs, maintenance instructional. Um, this is for our instrument repairs, that was completely cut out of our current budget. Um, so we're going to have probably a fair amount to do uh, next year. Um, so I did put money back into that line, um, so it looks like a decent increase compared to the, the current amount in there. Line number thirty-nine, which is electronic software and licensing. Uh, this didn't change significantly, but just important to note, um, we have adopted Witten Wisdom for fifth grade um, to stay in line with Wendy and what the, the kids are learning and how they're learning their reading and writing. Um, and there is a licensing component to that program, so I just kind of wanted to um, have that mental noted, um, that that would be built into that line moving forward. Um, line number fifty-six, general supplies, uh, we did increase that to um, you know, encompass rising costs, number one, and then, you know, shipping as well. Um, so there's a small increase there. Line number sixty-three, um, reading supplies. Um, again, this is because the Witten Wisdom program, um, for our current year, we're able to use ESSR funds to um, grab those supplies. Um, so those are now built into the budget and that would be the price for fifth and sixth grade for the student workbooks. Line number eighty-three, computer parts, very similar to what Wendy said, it's, it's, you know, the, the components of the Chromebooks. Um, we, our students use their Chromebooks all day long, um, in most of their classes, um, they do get fairly beat up. Need to replace keys, screens, um, and you know, that's what this line is, is typically used for.
Our tech support have been amazing, really just taking this on and Chromebooks that otherwise have been thrown away to learn how to replace.
Yes, yeah.
They're, they're being great.
It's good to ask when that impacts, because your Chromebooks aren't typically expensive devices anyway, so if you're sending those out for repair, it's easy to offset.
Our guys just jumped in and have a parts stash now, so they get a lot of stuff, no spoilers are, especially not.
Yes, lots of watches. Um, next one is line eighty-nine, periodicals, um, similar to Wendy, um, we have several teachers that love junior scholastic and it really enhances the curriculum. Um, so we'd like to put that back in, it was cut for this current school year. And several teachers, different subject areas, um, it's a really great resource to have for our teachers and for the kids. Um, line ninety-nine, um, books, English. Uh, that was decreased for twenty-four, twenty-five, um, because of the budget cuts. Um, and now you will see the books that are required for Witten Wisdom sixth grade, um, plus some money for replacement books in grade seven and eight. Um, we do not have to repurchase fifth grade Witten Wisdom books, it's the, the same books, they'll reuse um, every year. Um, so we paid for that through ESSR for the current year, but we don't need to purchase fifth grade books again. Um, line one oh three, books, reading, I really just moved that entirely into the, the English line, um, just because we have uh, one ELA teacher at each grade level now. So there's, there's no really distinction between the two. Um, line one oh five, books, social studies. Um, line one oh five, books, social studies, um, our eighth grade social studies textbooks are in dire need of replacement. Um, so that is the price for, um, one class set, three twenty-five textbooks, um, plus shipping. Uh, line one forty-one, replacement furniture, uh, we're looking to replace the tables in one classroom, student tables, um, and then replace two whiteboards in one of our math classrooms, uh, those get used daily and get incredibly beat up. Um, so there's two small whiteboards and then a classroom of student tables. Line one forty-seven, replacement equipment, um, this is, you know, all, all of our devices, uh, student Chromebooks, staff Chromebooks, um, it's the replacement cycle for all those things, the new line TVs, um, there are so many of those that, uh, we replace every year to keep up with, uh, what we need and what is no longer usable. Uh, line two thirty-two, special education supplies, we did, um, you know, decrease that entirely, um, and will, uh, use our general supply line to purchase anything that they need. Um, and another, just, just to note, our co-curricular stipends, uh, line three twenty-six. Um, not a huge decrease, uh, but that will decrease a little bit, um, I am proposing to discontinue robotics. Um, we are now in our second year of being unable to find someone to run that program. The proposal will be to discontinue the robotics advisor and add a cross-country assistant, um, so that would make two cross-country assistant coaches for that program. Um, we consistently have thirty-five to forty kids that participate in that program, um, so it's really an effort to, to make sure kids are, are supervised and, and safe as they're, um, running the trails, and, you know, just physical safety as far as exercise. Um, line four seventy-five, library books, we'd like to bring that back up to what it was before this year was cut partially due to the budget cuts. Um, we'd like to work to, uh, replace books and add new books, kinda revamp the selection of the books that are currently in our library. And then, the last line, um, I have a, a fairly significant change, line seven fifty-two, which is our bus rental for co-curriculars, I did decrease that because we are rarely able to procure a bus for our athletics. Uh, seven fifty-two.
Yeah, yeah.
Seven forty. Uh, seven forty-eight, that's called thirty-four. Yeah. And that makes more sense.
Bus rental.
Yeah.
If I get the wrong line name.
I'm sorry.
I just wanna make sure I wasn't.
Yeah, the one from.
Yes.
Okay, um, questions for Katie?
Hi.
Hi.
Uh, you're speaking about security with the cross-country and robotics.
Sure.
Yeah.
Don't mind us about this, Laurie. Um, right, that more people wanna run, love that, um, and we can go on the security thing. I'm wondering about the, the students who are interested in robotics but not being served, or in perfect understanding, but they can't get some insurance to support that, but, um, how many are you talking about relative to what you're talking about with the, the cross-country kids as well?
Um, robotics, when we had a strong program and advisor to run it, it was, uh, usually about sixteen kids that participated.
Yeah, it's a feat of the organization, it is well.
Correct, so last year was the first year that we couldn't find an advisor, um, actually, our advisor was doubling, she was our advisor and she ran the PA program, um, and that was too much for her to do, um, so last year, because she still ran the PA program, actually, I'm sure eventually you'll still do that, uh, so we actually worked with PA last year to have our eighth graders interested, um, and to join the team up here, um, I think that worked really well. I haven't had any kids ask about robotics, so I haven't put that out there yet, nor have I talked to them about that. Um, so I know that was a possibility for us last year, um, especially for our eighth graders.
I'm interested.
Uh, you do not want. I'd be better off if it were a cross-country, yeah, so.
Wanna hang out with some seventh and eighth graders, like, I can think of some middle school kids that are not athletes that should actually benefit from that, and then, come over here.
Well, we, we needed an adult to run the program.
Like, there's one that's, I'm wondering, there's no high school staff member that's interested in.
We didn't get anything from any of the schools.
We put the, we put the, that to all.
Posted everywhere, yeah.
He was cool, yeah, we always do.
Yeah.
Uh, my mind went sort of like a membership program also, where some of the, at least for the eighth graders, you know, if you integrate that, maybe you could do some kind of program with that to kind of cover the shortfall, but I, I worry about those kids who might have not been able to do something in that area, and I also worry about, you know, it's going to look like we're cutting robotics to put in.
Yeah.
If that's not what's going on, I understand that.
Yeah.
I mean, we, if the board wants, we can certainly put it in and hope that we find someone to, and it's not, this is first draft, so.
Yep.
Feel free to bring that up.
Others?
No.
Okay.
I have a question about, uh, trust funds, before we go to the next one.
Good.
Do you know, can we have a trust fund for, like, anything, or do we have to get, like, just things in the future? Can we have field trip trust fund that we put money into a trust fund for, like, our major ones, like DC, environmental camp, strawberry day, where we put a little bit each year for, because the costs aren't gonna go down, where there's like, and then the administration could, like, pull from that on really rough years on trisuries, because I feel like those are such important events that it's kind of part of the curriculum to go to DC and environmental camp. Can you?
I mean, we, you, as far as I'm aware, you can have a trust fund for anything, how would you set that up? And, I don't know, I have details of that, but I think, at least in my opinion, part of the, we've already got ten, um, some stuff we just have to pull the budget.
Yeah, we, we've talked about that.
And I think that we should, I think, I think we've actually made progress, if I remember right.
Yeah.
Of, of putting more, um, money in the budget towards those, and I think we should continue to do that, and I guess my concern would be if we, I'm not saying we shouldn't do it, it's my, um, I think there are more people than you would think in town that don't think that's a legitimate part of the curriculum, and if we had to space that out as a separate thing on the warrant and said, maybe let's put, I think you'd get a no vote on that, easier than if that's just part of the budget. I could be completely wrong, but that's my concept.
I was just trying to think of another way, because with rising costs, it's getting eaten up by a quarter of bus authority that gets to the kid.
Yes.
Spreading that opportunity, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, absolutely. And I, again, I agree, I thi- I think those trips that you mentioned in particular, uh, environmental camp, like, with their, I mean, strawberry banks, or the living history thing, like, those are truly important experiences for our kids.
Question. Be a little bit about that.
I'll just mention the one thing, because I've gotta go to budget, and if I told them we're creating a trust fund, they'll say that it's in the budget every year, so it should be part of the budget, so why would they?
That's true.
So, it's kinda like Josh with his boards and painting, you know, why is this, you get that question every single year, so.
We could have talked about a scholarship, for students who are struggling, that would be an offer, I would think. You have, take a short.
Any questions about yours?
Thanks, appreciate it. We will move on to the next. Okay, good evening, we'll start with, uh, line number nine, which is our sub-line on page one. I'm referencing, I know that there are two different page numbers here, so I'm referencing a smaller object page. So, uh, proposing to increase that five thousand dollars, that will, uh, reflect actuals. Um, as you can imagine, sub-lines fluctuate, you know, paternity leaves part of that, it's hard to anticipate, but, you know, there has been a trend, um, I don't think we need to increase it more than that, uh, because we, we do have less staff to provide such for, uh, you know, just given the stats, uh, but I do think it needs to go up five thousand.
So, if you can ask a question now?
Yeah.
Um, Katie's rationale for decreasing, and I think, like, remember John, past years, was just the availability, so are you not having that problem at, at the high school level, or are you, you're able to get people?
We have, um, we've had good luck retaining the people that come, um, but it is a strong core of four people, and they are, uh, definitely getting business, so.
So they're full-time employees?
They're here frequently, yeah, um, and our sub-assIGNers are great with them, and, um, they are very much part of our school community and feel comfortable.
Awesome.
Uh, so, the cop release is on line thirty-seven. So I wanna provide a little bit of context with this, we were, uh, faced with an unfortunate, um, overage bill uh, in July of this summer, uh, for seventeen thousand dollars, which is not something I had ever seen before. Our, uh, budget for the cop years, forty thousand dollars for the year, so, um, in order to not exceed that over the course of this year, we had to impose some pretty, I'll describe them as draconian limits on cop years, but we had to do that to ensure that we stayed within our budget for that. However, uh, that won't be the case, I'm still going to, uh, argue that we should have limits, different limits, but we should have limits next year to avoid those kind of costs in the future, but nonetheless, uh, with that being said, I am proposing that we increase that budget, uh, to fifty thousand. Moving on to line sixty-eight, which is general supplies. And, uh, you know, costs increase, shipping increases, stamps increase, um, and this, um, increase here keeps up with what we've been doing for actuals, uh, so, just trying to stay with that. Line sixty-nine is art supplies, and there's a two thousand dollar increase there, um, part of that is rising cost of materials, but there's also, uh, curricular changes, given that we have a new art teacher in there, and sometimes they have, you know, different things that they wanna do too, so, um, just a change there. Line seventy-four, music supplies, there's a nine hundred and fifty dollar increase there, and that is representing supplies needed for a new theater tech class. Uh, so, um, one of the things that I'm selfishly looking forward to, we're running this class right now, is to have more than a handful of people who know how to use the sound system. Line seventy-five is PE supplies, uh, there is, uh, you'll see this with a couple of other lines too, um, there's an increase here, and part of that is to recoup from, uh, dwindling surprise, uh, supplies from the budget freeze last year.
If you remember, we froze the budget in, like, October.
Yeah.
Maybe even September, so it went the whole year without being able to purchase.
Line seventy-seven is a big-ticket item, that's science supplies, um, you know, part of that is, you know, we have to replenish our chemicals every year, we have to get some updated lab kits, some model sets. Animals and organs for dissection are a significant cost, but even more than that is the shipping for those items is pretty considerable, even that they have to be, they have to be refrigerated. Line eighty is, uh, Makerspace supplies, uh, you may remember, we decided to have a discrete line for Makerspace, um, and in that, uh, departments, and would, you know, propose to put money into that, and this is for printer filament for three D printers, also wood, you know, vinyl sheets for printmaking, that sort of thing. Line eighty-four, computer parts, uh, proposing that we increase that, so, um, you know, our, our tech office is great in repairing, um, but we do have some times when, uh, Chromebooks are damaged and it's not accidental, and when that happens, we ask for restitution for that, um, however, when we get restitution, that comes to us in the form of revenue, you can't apply it, so we have to confront that money through that line, and then that money, uh, goes in as revenue when we collect it. Okay, we're gonna skip a little bit to line one twelve. You'll see an increase there of three thousand seven hundred and forty-nine dollars, and that is to update books for our Running Start Statistics class and our Probability and Statistics class. Moving to line one sixteen. That is a proposal for updated science books for physical science and our Human Bio lab books. And Human Bio is a class that we run as a, uh, Running Start class as well. There is, you see, now, when we partner with an institution higher than, sometimes there's an expectation that we're keeping up with, you know, the requisites that they're using too, so, part of that is the impetus for some of these. Okay, one seventeen, social studies books, this is, uh, to update our Advanced Placement US History and our Advanced Placement US Government books. Skipping to line one forty-two. Uh, this is replacement furniture, um, lab stools, uh, and a lab table for science, and I believe this may be the fourth year, uh, that, you know, some of you have seen this before, so, uh, they've put in for these lab stools for a number of years. One forty-eight, replacement equipment. Seen an increase there, uh, some of that's kiln, shelves, pottery wheels, worn or broken kitchen equipment, some instruments, and a leg extension machine for gym equipment. Okay, one forty-nine, this is always a big one every year, this is the replacement computer equipment, and hopefully the note is pretty descriptive here, uh, you can see, obviously, two hundred and twenty-five Chromebooks, twenty laptops, twenty desktops, uh, a projector for the Audi. Uh, these Wacom tablets are tablets that are used, uh, they're, like, very inexpensive iPads, or, you know, budget version of an iPad that would be used in math classrooms. Uh, interactive TVs or panels, um, like here in the library. Um, I also put a note here that previous year's budget number significantly lowered because we used Esser grant to pay approximately sixty thousand dollars, and Esser is no longer available. Just to provide a little bit of context for that.
So we, and you probably noticed, twenty-three, twenty. So we, and you probably noticed, 23, 24, that line was 116, and they only spent $49,000. And we did, because we froze the budget, we did try to recoup some of those items, sir.
Okay, line 158, new equipment in art. Esels are the storage and shelving. New equipment in math, this is those, so the Wacom writing tablets are here specifically for math. Those other tablets are used in other, for general purposes.
At the same line?
That is line 161, for new equipment. 162, you'll see new equipment in music, and that is for a soprano sax, tuba, and a bass clarinet. Line 165, new equipment in science. A physics lab station, zip grow hydroponics are, there's some things in there. Okay, line 236, I'm going to jump a little bit here. Page 18. This is exceptional services supplies. We'll see office supplies, bakery life skills supplies, learning center supplies, postage, and also an increase in the number of students in the skills program, which obviously requires a little bit more in terms of what we need to support. Line 253. That is a proposal for a portable TV for instruction and for meetings. So, we have one of these in the building that's used for instructional purposes. It's a smaller version of the TV on the wall here, but it comes on a part that is safely secured. And they're proposing that they would use that for meetings, to put draft IEPs on that, or to use that, you know, as a remote function if that's needed. And then it can be used for instructional purposes when it's not needed for the purpose.
Can I ask a question, so I don't forget? Is that like for the teachers in the IEP team, like during, or for a meeting? Because we have the online portal that parents get, so they can print their own. So, are you talking like the staff in the IEP team being able to get that?
Yes, like during the meeting, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
So, it's for the staff, then? Because we have like a portal through SAU 53 that you can see everything, and if the parent wants to print it, they can print it themselves. Okay. I just want to make sure.
But they could be for anyone in that room?
Yeah, anyone in the room.
I mean, if they're printing it, they can print that, but otherwise it'd be, you know, just a projector, anyone in the room who wants to view it all together.
Yeah, I was just, I'm sure we're not, I just hope we're not making a million copies for parents, because there's a portal for that. So if they want to see it on paper, print it out, okay.
All right, jumping ahead here, line 304. We're going to see woodshop supplies. This has increased steadily over the past few years. Anyone that's done a project at their house could see that inflation has definitely hit lumber significantly. And that's also the case, so supplies for woodshop include wood, obviously, but also includes consumable tools like bits, blades, fasteners, that sort of thing. Line 319 is software for our business tech classes, and this is for WeVideo, a WeVideo subscription for film, you know, movie promotion. Okay, and then we'll go to line 340, and these next few are going to be co-curriculars. So this is an increase to co-curricular supplies. Part of that is just keeping up with increased costs, but also to kind of supplement a depleted supply from budget freezes. Line 345, co-curricular replacement equipment. $6,000 is in there for those replacement parcels, those were cut last year, I'm assuming it's being proposed again. You may remember that. Line 347 is an increase to the NHIA dues that we pay. And then also an increase in field rentals. There are times in the year where, because of competing, you know, teams needing fields at the same time, and especially like, you know, with diminished daylight right now, where we have to utilize other fields. Like, for instance, the fields on Buck Street, and there's a rental cost of that too sometimes. All right, line 391. That is for testing. So for a lot of tests, college board tests, like PSATs, you know, PSAT 10, that sort of thing. The students pay, but we have to initially pay. So we kind of run into that same situation where we are initially paying, but then they pay us back. That is considered revenue, it has to through that process. Line 403 is summer nurse. So, actually, this just started during Essor, where we started having our health office staffed in the summer for PyL. And we've continued to do that, given, you know, the medical fragility of some of our incoming students, and the fact that we don't know them very well during those first couple of weeks. And so, now that Essor has ended, we have to include that cost in the budget. So, that's, that's why you're seeing that increase there. Line 477, almost done. Library books, and this is supplementing our collection budget that's increased this year's. Line 510 is library replacement equipment. We have a roll laminator machine that has a lot of miles on it, and this would be to replace that machine. Okay, line 593 is our other assignment stipend line. And a significant change here is an increase to our Delta teacher stipends, just, you know, to have those classes. Not that we're paying those teachers more, it's that we have a demand for more Delta classes. Line 645 is our graduation line, proposing to increase that 2,000 to 17,000. And then the final two, line 749 is bus rental. And this is for our co-curriculars. That one fluctuates a little bit, you know, obviously if our teams are very successful and they go, you know, far into the tournament, then we're going to end up paying more for transportation. And then, line 752, field trip bus expense. That was at $1, and I'm proposing putting that back up to 2,500. Not that we're, it's similar to a lot of those other things where if a class wanted to go on a field trip, a line share of that would be incurred by the students, but we would have to pay, you know, the bus cost upfront and then get paid back. And that's, that's all I had.
All right, questions about PAs budget so far?
This is a question specifically for PA. But I noticed we have in here, for each of the schools, mileage. What do we, what is the mileage that we're paying?
You know, I can, just for PA, we have some staff who have to go to the bank or have to pick up things at stores for us, and there may be some small mileage costs there. We may also have people in the special ed world, there's, there's mileage in that, you know, 1,200 lines, and that would be if they have to, you know, go to like Running Star, or Strong Foundations, you know, or go to other schools, because part of their responsibilities.
I just, I ask only because I'm on, sorry, line 656, there's 658. So each other's schools, I mean, it's $700, you know. Not saying cut the money, but I'm just wondering what we're, because I know with some businesses and some, some different organizations that it's if you travel outside of like 10-mile range or 20-mile range, then you can get reimbursed for mileage. And you know, if that was just maybe something that we could.
I don't know, I don't know. We've always historically, you know, told the staff member, if you need to travel someplace for work, we reimburse them at the IRS rate. I don't, I would have to check and see if we have a policy in place for that, and it's certainly something we can look at. I think they are accustomed to getting reimbursed for mileage, so those changes we get are a real good thing.
I mean, the offset PD would be reimbursed too, right?
No. Well, they, they can, they can use their PD funds for that. So they get packed amount, and if they choose to use mileage for some of that, they can, but that wouldn't be in here.
That's, those lines don't have anything to do with special ed then, those are employee lines? It would be somewhere else?
Correct.
Because I know that there's some parents, like, all the buses are coming, and they're out of district place, and the district does sometimes reimburse because the parents are bringing them back and forth. I want to make sure it's not that.
That, nope.
Okay.
Others? So, as I always do, I went to the last page. But no, I, I went to the last page, I compared it to, I pulled up the budget, which actually he got last year, the first week in November, so I think we're about three, three weeks ahead of schedule. But it's only up after everything that went on, $135,000. So it's like a five and a half percent increase over where we were last year at this point in time. So, and without the Essor funds that were offsetting this, I think that's not, that, I mean, $116,000 in one line, that's, that's the majority of it right there. You just want to say one thing out, so cost, production for made and paying or cutting certain places to accommodate. But is on here today, so I think it looks pretty good. It's a good starting point. Other questions, comments? Okay, thank you all, I know this is a ton of work. Fun's just beginning for the year, so we appreciate it. And I purposely had to move that up to 68, so that you don't all have to listen to the NHSBA resolutions or the NHTC, so. It's welcome, peace out if you want to.
But I said, sorry, this is, yeah, I just formulated the question. I just want to put a marker in my own head right now for this, because we'll come back to this several times. But I realize when you're talking staff and beyond, just sort of, you know, some of these are built in here. But is it your, is it your assessment right now that your current staffing levels are a total, a bare minimum staffing level for your school right now? To do the job that you have to do?
I would love to share that.
Or below minimum, that's an option too.
I would say below ideal. It would be hard for us to, you know, for instance, when we went through this process last year, we tried to be very intentional with preserving the student experience as much as we could when making the cuts we made, and it would be exponentially harder to do that. We had to make more staffing cuts next year. Appreciate it.
I'd say kind of the same thing, but it kind of depends on the area. So, you know, as far as like supervision of the hallways, we do not have enough staff. And the staff that were cut made a significant negative impact on, like, especially our main hallway. I mean, that's entirely where most of our staff came from, and now there's no one there. So, you know, it kind of depends on the area that you're talking about. You know, we split each grade level four ways instead of five. Depending on the total number in each grade level, that was fine, or it's kind of like, ooh, you know, bare minimum kinds of things. So it kind of depended on, depends on the area. We really struggled creating our UA schedule this year, so, I mean, that's an area where, like, that one staff member was huge as far as impacting where kids can go, you know, how many different ways kids get split up. So, in some areas, it's super impactful, in some areas, it's, it's okay, you know, we're, we're making it work.
I would say, kind of what Dan was saying, less than ideal. I mean, I think we're really, like, we're at that line. Like, if, if we're losing staff, it's, you know, class sizes for us. We don't have anybody additional or anything like that, you know. So, we're just toeing that line right now.
And I just want to, just for my own, it's not just what was cut, it's also what was lost after the cut as well. So, there was a belt involved in that, that's probably what I understand. Appreciate that, thank you.
We all, we all know Wendy's, like, the kindergarten classes are probably one of the biggest ones, right?
Thanks. As I, as I mentioned at the last meeting, we're feeling it probably most significantly with our kindergarten paraprofessionals because of the level of support they need. And then I would say going into like, just support for students or class sizes are a challenge right now. But that's probably been one of the biggest pieces for us.
And thinking ahead to, you know, communication with, with the community about this. I think it's sort of, that's sort of a touchy, like, I don't know how you explain behaviors and things in the kindergarten classroom without coming across like you're blaming kids or anything like that. But I think it is important for us to find a way to do that, because I think there's, I think there are, there's a significant number of people in town, and I think we're all guilty of this sometimes, but think about things the way they were when they were. And, you know, having 25 children in a classroom in 1987 versus having 25 children in a classroom today is not the same thing. I think we need to get that point across somehow. Because, you know, it's come up at MDC for, at least my entire tenure over there, that, well, the state says we can have 25 kids in a room, so why do we only have 17 or 18? So, I think it's a tall order, but if we can, if we can attempt to find a creative way to explain what the difference between 17 and 25 kids in the kindergarten classroom is, that would be super helpful to illustrate, I think.
Oh, I think we've all talked about that, I mean, that we've been talking about that for years, so, you know, those are the people who have said that. Thank you. People who have said that, let me try that again.
People who've said that, I've encouraged them on multiple occasions to call Wendy, call Dan, call Amy now, and, and come, you know, toward the school when it's at its busiest. Come into the school at lunchtime, come in when the kids are transitioning from, you know, their classroom to a UA, and just see, and I mean, it's, obviously, it's increased, the melee has increased with less staff and less, less supervision, you know. The melee has increased with less staff and less, less supervision, you know. Continue to encourage them. Take it, you know, call, make an appointment, go in and just kind of stand there and watch. You know, and maybe we can get that to happen this year. Maybe we can't. But I just, I'm not going to stop pushing for it just so that they can have firsthand view of 25 kids in a classroom.
Well, it's a completely different culture now. So that whole idea back when I was in school, it is, there's maybe some similarities, but the culture has completely changed now. Where, you know, I remember back in the dark ages, when I walked uphill both ways in the snow to school. That we did have 30 kids in class. And, but those kids sat in it because we did get whacked on the nose, you know, or, you know, if our parents found out, and I don't think today it's, it doesn't ring true the same way because the culture has changed. So, and I just want to also comment, Ken, like I think it was your initial question concerning the budget and the positions in there. And something I would hope to see when we see the budget next time around is that the paraprofessionals are put back in for at the very least, the kindergarten at Hill. Because I don't, I don't think there's the same community support or the same family support that there was back in our day. So.
I just had one quick thing, and I know you guys are going to hate this, but, and I know we're going into budget season, but hopefully at the next workshop, we can get moving on our ideas of a strategic plan. But I think one of the like priority things, and you'll probably agree with me, that we need to do is communication, not just the Facebook page. We can start breaking up. We don't need to do a 12-page thing like books it. But I will help, I will dedicate time and help on the weekends, whatever you guys need. I think we need to have a report and keep all these notes in the annual interim thing. And then however else, I think we need to tackle communication first, all of our ideas of how we're going to communicate these things to the community so that we can ensure that we change the perspective in the community so that our budget goes there.
That's my number one observation.
Yes.
And the number two through five observation as well of this entire process. So we can, in fact, with that.
I will add that the MBC is having its first meeting on Thursday at 6:30 at Town Hall at Illinois Memorial Situation. I will be there. Well, you do.
No, I do. I will be there.
Can I just want one more thing that's not related to that other question? Sorry, keep your ear to your mouth. Do we have anything approaching a technology strategy? We do? Okay.
We, I think we're on our second iteration of that since the life cycle has changed of technologies. We've, we've gone back and forth between a four-year and a five-year replacement cycle. But our tech staff does an excellent job of doing inventory and figuring out the amount that we, amounts where we get those numbers. They advise us like, if you don't put this much in the budget every year, we will not keep up with our replacement cycle. Yeah, it's a good question. Thank you.
Anything else before we let these guys go? Thanks again. Appreciate it. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. This is still on.
Is there people on?
Uh, ten, sure. She had it written.
I know.
She's one of the, I mean, you know, here is the situation. Good night.
I think in fairness, yeah, some people who watch recording, you know, they can't even lie, that's.
Sorry, I'm just trying to bring up the drive. So 6B is Manhattan School Board Association Resolutions for Public Consumption. If you are watching this, to get a little context of what that is, Annually New Hampshire School Board Association holds a, what do they call it, summit?
Delegate.
Delegate Assembly, thank you, on a Saturday, and it's coming up fairly soon. And each school board has the opportunity to propose resolutions that the body at large can adopt. And those are things that the New Hampshire School Board Association will lobby for or, you know, kind of put their weight behind to try to accomplish, you know, the state legislature or wherever it's appropriate. So we have some of those that we need to review and see if we support them or not. So I'm not going to read the whole thing. It's crazy. Does anybody have any that they, that they have strong opinions on that they want to jump to first and that are going to take a bunch of discussion?
Have strong opinions, but I think my five of their defects.
But, you know, I'm just.
Sure, thanks.
So just to help us organize it, who's the delegate this year?
Andy is.
Oh, it's you. All right. So Andy is going to need direction on every single resolution to vote to represent you. It's, we try to always vote in the affirmative. So what's been helpful in the past, there's a school board association recommendation at the end of the resolution. And boards have typically said, I, you know, vote to, lost my words. Yeah. Vote to approve in the affirmative whatever the school board's recommendation, association recommendation was. Or you can have alternative language. Sometimes there's alternative language. But just make sure you keep the motions in the affirmative. That's the easiest way. And oftentimes referring to whatever the school board recommended is also an easier course of action. And then Andy will have a record of how to vote on Saturday.
True.
Okay, I'm all right with that.
Oh, yeah.
All right. So just going in order then, I'm going to try to summarize these as best I can. Number 13, let it be resolved, New Hampshire School Association supports and advocates for statewide legislation and local school policy that affirms the rights of all students to participate in education, improving school-sponsored curricular or co-curricular activities free of discrimination on base vendor identity. The New Hampshire School Board gave a alternate recommendation. And is this different text or is this what they've already, it's already in place? Yeah. So then there's a number of these where the, this year where the New Hampshire School Association basically says that they believe that resolutions in the past or another resolution this year can satisfy the same objective. And I think this is, is basically one of those. So discussion around this one.
These alternative resolutions recommended by the board. Is it one of those little things brought up law that we started preparing things? Somebody did a lot of stuff, they've written, they've included. So I'm not subjecting to this, but I would say if they're going to do this, they need to include the language that says, including but not limited to, in order to make it as malleable as possible of advice. Someone's going to tripwire us.
So at this point, I think we have to give Andy direction if we want to include that to amend the resolution.
Yeah.
While he's there.
This group doesn't think that's necessary. It's fine. But in my experience, the five years from now, or two years from now, it's going to come along. And even though we think we thought of everything, there will be, there'll be a realm where we didn't say that, like, I don't know.
Yeah, my, my only problem with that is that change, evolution is occurring all the time. Change is occurring all the time. So what's it, the intent versus the words? Does, what's the intent of this? And, you know, is it the?
I totally, I totally agree with your respect. Like, if, from my perspective, I think the original one's fine. Because it's vague enough, right? But I get worried when people start hanging on to some truth. Then they're going to miss one. So.
Any more discussion about that? So basically the option here is agree with New Hampshire School Association that Resolution VI colon F that was adopted in 2021 is sufficient or not? And if not, then do we support the proposed resolution by the annual justice school?
Okay, just to be clear, I will.
I'm just thinking of, I'm trying to think how that works, you know, like you said, it's vague enough. So the intent, it preserves the intent. And by, you know, included but not limited to kind of changes possibly the intent of unforeseen, like you said, unforeseen things in the future that may not be acceptable. But because it's vague enough, it might be deemed to be acceptable, right? So that's the only concern I have of that.
Yeah, like the amendment there, something's underneath that, right? Someone felt that the original language wasn't sufficient enough. I'm not sure why.
I, I think there's, I'll get to it later on, but I think there, there may be a lack of understanding too.
Like is there, is there some sort of dialogue somewhere that speaks of extracurricular, co-curricular as not an aspect of education? If so, then I expect them to put an idea, right? And we're living in four trillion times. So I can certainly see that somebody that might do that, but, yeah.
So which one, I'm confused. Just saying, which one is, are there?
They're written on page two.
So from the first page is, so number 13, the first page is the new proposed resolution by Hannah Ward-Resin. New Hampshire School Board Association's response is, we already adopted something in 2021 that we think is pretty stinking close, but maybe we, we would recommend just updating the language in that previous one that we already have to include the bold and underline here rather than adopting another resolution on top.
And we can say then, Andy, we, we can say to Andy, we think that you should propose this amendment to the alternate resolution that the New Hampshire School Board Association is putting forward with the language that can mention.
I mean, sure, but I know you can amend.
You can amend. Well, yeah, I think that was leaked last year. Yeah. So they can amend, you can stand up and tell why you want to amend.
Yeah, this is, this is by ignorance here. When you go to this meeting, are you being asked to choose between these two? Is that what happens here?
Yeah, pretty much. Somebody will make, like we do here, somebody will make a motion to support the NHSBA response or the, you know, obviously some Hannah, someone from Hannah Ward-Resin is going to be there. They're going to have to support this one. And then the vote moves forward. And then if it doesn't pass, I think if somebody makes a motion to adopt the NHSBA resolution recommended.
It's, it's kind of like town meeting where you can amend and amend and amend, and the system and it has. So, yeah.
Depending, I'm with those here for a good five or six hours or two.
I'm almost inclined, based on some of what Ken has said, to just vote no.
That's what I had written down. That's what I was just saying.
I think that VI colon F is already more obscure and therefore covering more with the same intent. I think the proposed recommendation by NHSBA, while it looks also all encompassing, if it's going to do anything, it's going to narrow the scope. It's certainly not going to widen the scope. I, I guess my feeling is VI colon F is good.
Who's the motion? Oh, okay. Okay. I make a motion to approve the New Hampshire School Board Association ultimate recommendation for Resolution Number 13.
Okay. Any other discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Right?
Aye.
Any opposed or extensions? Start with vote. I should print this, Betty. All right, 14. I haven't read this before our last meeting. It's a little here. So the proposed resolution is short. So it was read, the New Hampshire School Association will ensure that NHSBA members are not being used for lobbying purposes consistent with RSA 15 colon 5. This is not recommended by NHSBA or the number three.
Many paragraphs.
Yes.
So unless we want to get really down and dirty.
No.
I make a motion to support the NHSBA response.
Their recommendation, their, yeah, their response.
Their response to Resolution Number 14.
I'll second.
Any conversation on this one? All those who are either supporting the NHSBA response or number 14, say aye.
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 Any opposed, any extensions?
15 has to be non-applicable, but maybe I missed that. Yeah, they basically said it's not a resolution.
Yeah. So I think we can skip it.
Yep.
Right. 16. Basically NHSBA to F8 for the state legislature to create a universal subsidized meal program for NHS public school students. The response, similar to the Resolution Number Two, NHSBA supports that the state federal government seek to provide viable sustainable permanent funding to provide a school breakfast sandwich at no cost to students, which was adopted in 2022.
They added, add no cost to the school districts.
Right. So they're, they're proposing another addition to a previously adopted. I love that addition.
Yeah.
I, I like the addition, but at some point, you know, it.
Somebody's paying for it.
Somebody's paying for it. Yeah, exactly. And so the someone who's paying for it is us. We just paid for it in a different way. So, I mean, I, it's not my budget. It's not in our budget though. But, and, and, you know, one of the other things is too, here at least in Pembroke, we have had the ability to somewhat offset that when it, when it does occur. Because I think the, the troop service does run a surplus usually. It did. I was just asking.
It has during COVID. I don't know what it's at right now.
Yes.
Yes, it's relatively. But you can't use that surplus to offset debt, lunch.
That's true. Yeah.
I would say there's merit also in pushing this forward. If it gives us a bat and ball to have a broader argument with the state about their obligations, which they're not meeting, and that is half dozen other ways. So.
Yeah, yeah. I'll have to agree with that now that it's, yeah.
So I'm motion to support NSA Resolution Number 14.
6B.
The county.
Alternative resolution.
How many times?
No, pardon?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The no cost part.
The no cost.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I'm sorry. Yeah.
I'll second.
But did somebody make that?
Oh. I thought Jean said yes to that. So.
No, I was.
All right, I will make that motion.
I will second. All right. Any other conversation around this one? So we're voting to support the alternative resolution recommended by NHSBA.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions? Well, here we go, Jean.
17.
17. Oh, I thought it was further down. To summarize this.
Keep in mind I don't have a copy.
Yeah. So I mean, it's basically concerning.
Yeah, so I, I mean, it's basically concerning the it's concerning gun-free schools. On the actual resolution. It feels like it's not.
It, it seems more like a political statement.
Yeah, there's not, I don't know if there's action in this one, so, so I'll read the end here. Concord Board of Education opposes current state law, urges city of Concord to look at representatives to do stuff, urges New Hampshire State Legislature to do stuff, commits to creation or revision of Congress's district policies, directs Concord School District Superintendent to distribute stuff. I don't see where this is, sure, go ahead.
So at, at this point, there's the federal and state laws conflict. We've taken the stance, I think all school districts, I've heard a school district that doesn't take that stance, that if someone brings a weapon to school, we're calling the police and we're going to let them sort it out. This resolution seeks to, the, and the language that they added was further support state legislation that would allow law enforcement of the Federal Gun-Free School Zones Act with New Hampshire. So right now, state law and federal law say something different about bringing weapons in the building. The reason we have no school on voting day is the public is allowed to carry in the school. So I think they're moving towards, we don't want that and we want to support legislation that will be in a line, state and federal aligned enforcement.
Thank you, that's helpful, I, I just, I'm still not sure it's worded. It's well, like, it's, it's not asking for action like the rest of them are.
The very last one, I think we just looked at the very.
Yeah, so, yeah, the alternative resolution.
From what I've read, they seem to totally have a lot of concerns around straight-driven and soapbox.
Yeah.
Out, just to say at least more, you know, reconcile at least favor.
So I, I will state, because I had kids that went here and I do have my concealed carry PRL in the state of New Hampshire, and New Hampshire is in adherence with the Gun-Free School Zone Act, because it provides that any person with this, that the federal law provides that any person with a state issued license to carry a firearm may do so on a school ground, so other states have passed laws prohibiting that. New Hampshire is the only state that has not, therefore, New Hampshire is not in conflict with the federal law. And it does enforce the Gun-Free School Zone Act. But again, that part of it only applies to the students, which I will hardly agree with. But Concord is, or the Concord School District, again, their resolution is incorrect. And I I believe it's the New Hampshire School Board Association's responsibility in all parts. If we want to prohibit guns from being in the schools, period, nobody, then that goes to the state legislature. The state legislature is the only entity in the state that can administer gun laws. And also, it has discretion to, and has in the past, I think, declined to enforce federal gun laws because they are in conflict with the New Hampshire State Constitution. But that was something because I do carry a gun from time to time, and if I had a gun on school property, dropping off or picking up or going to a sporting event, then I clarified this to make sure that it was okay, I didn't want to make that mistake. And actually, to be honest, it's actually legal to open carry in a school with a license, although it's not recommended. So.
I appreciate your voting.
But, yeah, so I, I have to, you know, support the alternative resolution.
Okay, so you're saying you support the alternative resolution, but your understanding of Gun-Free School Zones Act already in compliance?
They are in compliance, yes.
Yeah, well, this is maybe a hair splitting exercise, but their alternative is asking for the enforcement of the Federal Gun-Free Zone Act. The assumption there is that maybe the legislature has, in its wisdom, deemed, if not necessary to enforce in any branch, which also could mean somebody's come along and said, get it done, or even though you may have a concealed carry permit. So the enforcement can work in both directions.
Yeah.
So in that sense, the, the language seems to be, to be in that alternate recommendation. Okay, I don't know that it materially changes a single thing.
Right.
But at least it's a sort of mark.
Yeah, I would agree with all of that. I, I'm just reading that.
Yeah, I happen to disagree.
I have to disagree with both. Because again, we are, every school in the state is complying, in the state government, the State Department of Education is complying with federal firearms laws as pertains to gun-free schools zones, so.
The alternative resolution wouldn't change that. If, if in fact we are in compliance, all that's saying is that it would allow enforcement of that, which would already be the case then.
But doesn't it, when you say advocate for legislative action that ensures local school boards comply with federal firearms laws? Okay, but doesn't it, you read it that way?
The alternative one.
Right.
Other response, yeah, yeah, no, I saw it here.
Yeah, the, the short one at the end of page ten is concise. Keep going, okay.
The word allow is problematic there, but, because it, it's already, it's already enforced. Yeah, I was looking at that.
So. Well, somebody needs to make a motion. Clarify. So should you guys want to?
Can you abstain? Yeah, it, it feels like a good use of an extension to make the point, right? Because your point, you want to make the point, you said, we're not sympathetic to the idea of making sure that schools are safe. So you don't want to know what you've thought of as that. And, you know, if you're explaining, you're already tied. So.
Yeah, they were.
An extension could be an opportunity to say this is actually a bad word, and it's nobody's fault because this is a very hard issue. Right, so.
Did you?
This has been going on since I did it my first year, and this continually keeps coming back. What was that?
Did you read the rationale?
I kind of like that Andy says, I, I heard it two weeks ago.
Okay. This is a situation over a weekend time, and there were students in the building, created panic because adults had weapons from them.
So is there?
I, I just didn't read, I guess I just didn't read the rationale, I'm sorry.
I mean, they have the ability right now, now that probably, it would probably cloud the scene, but the school at some point in time can trespass you if, you know. You are.
And we could if you weren't breaking up current law.
Our parents involved.
Oh my gosh.
You know, saying, having the same thing.
Well, and I guess give you a point, like, if, I don't know that law well enough, but if the safety at for example, law does defer to state law, which I mentioned since they were passing that thing, right? Does defer to state law with respect to licensing and concealed carrying, open carrying, then even the incident that they described there is not a violation of law. So that, so the premise here is, is broken in a way.
Yeah, but if the adults who were at the school were open carrying, they're idiots and, and causing a panic and, and, yeah. Actually making the whole situation more dangerous than it needs to be, yeah, so.
So is there a motion for abstain?
I would make a motion for abstain from this, and I try to provide as adequate an explanation as possible.
Any, so the motion is seconded, ready for the discussion?
So that's just Resolution Seventeen?
Yes.
Yeah. All right, I'll take the motion to abstain on number seventeen. Is there?
Aye.
Thank you. Eighteen.
We want to discuss, or, okay, go ahead, Jean, sorry.
No, proposes state development, ethical and sustainable tax plan dedicated to the public education for the purpose of fully funding constitutionally adequate Yeah, so, I mean, this is another one, it's bailing all this time. So NHSBA's response is again with an alternate resolution that modifies the language in the previously adopted solution, and to read NHSBA proposes that the state development, ethical and sustainable tax plan will educate so that public schools operated by local school districts for the purpose of fully funding constitutionally adequate education for all students in the state.
I would have to go with the alternate resolution on this because it defers to public schools operated by local districts. This one kind of.
Public education.
Yes, it's public education rather than private, you know, there are public, you know.
Charter schools.
Charter schools, there are other, you know, alternative schools, that's not the other thing, and right now we see public funds being diverted away from public education to go to other entities that were never part of the public. Even though they may accept public, you know, school fees, they're not part of the public school system.
And they have to do that.
I mean, I don't know that we oppose this, right? Sure, there's a different way of thinking of this.
It just, I, the reason, yeah, the reason I, I, I don't is because, yeah, they, NHSBA define public schools operated by local school districts in their alternate resolution.
Yeah, I love that.
So there next, will you support the alternative resolution?
I make a motion to support the alternative resolution by the New Hampshire School Board Association on Resolution.
Second?
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Nineteen.
Three oh sixes.
What?
It's about the three oh sixes, the what?
Do you want to explain that?
It's maybe different.
So, it's just the past two years, it's just been shortened to three oh sixes. The State Department of Ed has had now for a couple of years, been working on the three rules, Ed three oh six, which is the minimum standards, standards for education. And they, that was, the first half was approved, and then just recently, the second half was approved. So I think they're just saying that it's not recommended because they already adopted the minimum standards, so a resolution to tell them not to support them is a moot point at this point.
But didn't they adopt lower minimum standards?
They are. I mean, they're different.
Yeah.
We have the side by side that's being published so that we can have a, a good summary of the changes that we'll put in the board drive as soon as.
Yeah, I, I mean, just the wording mastery to proficiency is kind of like excellent education to adequate. You know, and that's kind of.
Do any of the NHSBA recommends not supporting?
Right.
I would agree.
The actions are right to take.
All right, so that. Sorry, I'm taking, so then.
So adopt the recommendation of NHSBA.
Cool. So I'll make a motion to.
Adopt the recommendation. If you adopt their recommendation, it's imperative that their recommendations are not too imperative.
But there is one. Yes, they're, oh, yeah, yeah, well, yeah. Just doesn't.
Yes. Yes.
But I mean, that, that, the way I'm reading it would be they gave a rationale, but they said not to adopt it, but then to do a positive motion, you'd have to say to support Resolution Nineteen, and then we all have to say no.
We can say.
Support payers.
We're supporting the NHSBA.
Recommendation.
Okay, two thousand. All right, so we're throwing that, that negative in there.
Yes.
I was making it on the way.
Just say at the top, agree with their recommendation, then you get the nods and the.
Motion to agree with the NHSBA recommendation on like Resolution Number Nineteen.
Second.
Any other conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
Both abstained? Number twenty?
Is the same as thirteen?
Yeah.
That we can. And thirteen was not applicable. Thirteen.
We did the.
Yeah.
Tell.
VI.
You want the same thing?
So, I, I mean, I'm assuming somebody tabled this or.
They're probably, yeah, they're probably going to remove it, no, what will probably happen is Oyster River will probably take it back because it's already.
Oh, that's a wordism.
So I guess we're going to hear a motion to abstain if it exists.
I agree.
Just in case that doesn't.
Well, if it does, if they let it go through and they, if they don't pull it.
You can just, you can just make a motion to support this one as well.
Okay, sure.
The alternate.
The alternate, yeah.
Make a motion to support the alternate resolution by the HBA, SBA on Resolution Number Twenty.
Ready, is there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
I guess that's good too, because they could table the first one, this one.
Yeah, that's very. Geez Louise.
NHSBA will advocate for lost covering impact fees to be updated to require local planning board to revisit impact fee methodology policy in general at least every five years. Who show local ordinances reflect legislative or rule changes and consider other local factors in school district concern.
Me too.
Yeah, so like the only one that NHSBA was like, yeah, let's do it.
Let's do that, yeah.
So we'll make a motion to support Resolution Twenty One.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All right, all in favor of supporting Resolution Number Twenty One?
Aye.
Post, extensions?
I get what he was.
Here we go. Page. NHSBA will support legislation that requires the state of New Hampshire to fund the cost and use youth risk behavior survey for all middle school students in state. NHSBA recommends not adopting, as they say, recognizes and appreciates the interest and state desire to address problem behaviors and build stronger risk prevention strategies. However, the board directors also believes that local school districts should undertake the survey on their own volition, lest it be another mandate from the state and another task level to punish the district staff.
So I think this is a quick question, Claire, so is it CDC prevention will pay for this for anyone who wants to do this?
They pay for high school, I don't know.
Oh, definitely.
And right, they, they want the little school portion to also be prepared.
Okay, I see, I see.
School board association is saying, stop requiring us to do these extra things.
Got it.
That you can do it if you want.
Okay. Would it be the case that if they recommend that the state pay for it, that everyone would then have to do it? That?
Yeah, I think that's what they.
Is that one?
Yeah, parents have a right to opt out.
Okay.
What you're getting at, yes, the school.
Yeah, the state said, we're going to pay for this. Everyone was concerned. Trying to stay on this, right?
End torn on this one, it's an important thing, but it's also another thing that takes away half of the school day, learning stuff, possibly more staff.
However, looking at all the costs that are out of control, because it is a different time and age, it's not a bad idea, so maybe they should do middle one, high school.
High school is done, I don't know, I think a lot of the behaviors identified in the high school survey lead down to the school.
Oh, absolutely, like.
Know that you're gonna get additional data.
You don't think so, that would help the high school if you got that in sixth or something, right?
I think the high schoolers identify when they start in behaviors. So, I think sometimes they'll say, oh, I started drinking in sixth grade, and, oh, I started vaping in seventh grade. So, I'm just, I just don't know. I don't know what the data give you, but you don't really know.
And.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I don't know, can go both ways.
I mean, it is really.
Middle school's changed a lot, even in like five or six years, that's all I'm saying.
To that point, I mean, once, once they hit ninth grade, they're starting to have some sense of maturity. A little bit. And, uh, you know, uh, I think at the I don't want to have to run into something where we have parents throwing their arms up and down, like, why are you asking about my kid's, you know, sex behavior and, you know, all their own lives and, and things like this, I just think.
What do you knock down?
You can, but I think, I think it's getting to that point where you're at the plus, if you're.
To be surprised, man.
I'm surprised at all. I just think there are certain.
I don't have a strong opinion, I just, I just see way too much in this area.
And the thing I'm thinking is.
Taking care of fourteen year old pregnant kid, like, I just.
Yeah.
It's not a bad idea, let's just say.
And having the information. Having the information available also is a tool, like I was talking about with Wendy earlier, to be able to communicate to the community, like, look, this is what middle school's like today. This is why we need another counselor, this is why we need whatever.
But I think the question is, do you want a mandate? You can decide, we want our Emerald Sports today, we can do so.
Yeah, I'd rather have that freedom.
Okay, yeah.
Well. I'll make a motion to support the NHSBA response on number twenty, resolution number twenty-two.
I'll second.
Any other discussion on this one? Alright, all in favor of supporting the NHS War Society Association response? You say aye?
I'll second.
I'm not stating, can you?
No. I have it, we both. No, you can keep my vote the way it is, but it's tough.
Alright, number twenty-three. NHSBA urges the legislature to repeal all laws that assert global control in regard to materials found in public school libraries. Or the NHSBA urges New Hampshire Legislature to repeal all laws that assert global control in regard to materials used to teach curriculum established by New Hampshire State Legislature, New Hampshire Department of Educational Schools.
My top was library oversight, library material oversight.
Um, yeah, I think so, that's fair. Uh, NHSBA recommends not adopt, and their rationale is that they have two continuing resolutions that speak to this matter already.
I mean, I'd like the resolution. But if it's ongoing, then kind of have to just didn't.
Yeah, yeah, I agree with NHSBA, and I mean, and all about library is known with the same few as the library, but number five does that pretty plainly. I don't see any material difference here.
So you are supporting the response?
Yeah, well, somebody needs to.
Okay, I'll make a motion to support the NHSBA response. Library oversight number twenty-three, am I right? Yeah.
Yeah.
There's a second?
Second.
No conversation? Alright, then all in favor of supporting any NHSBA's response to not adopt, please say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Post?
I'm gonna abstain.
Okay. Maybe this is the last one? Twenty-four is a block to share.
Yeah. We'll wait this day, wait, um, it's, so let's see, NHSBA opposes state laws that require mandatory reporting with teachers and staff, parents regarding conversations, teachers and staff, including counseling therapy and school psychology. Having a student regarding the student's own status is never ready to predict a class. NHSBA supports alternative language. Uh, the alternative languages, NHSBA supports legislation which prioritizes the well-being and safety of students, and while recognizing the rights of parents to make decisions about their children, also gives due consideration weight to educators' professional judgment and their responsibility under the code of ethics for New Hampshire educators to always act in the student's best interest. I'm personally good with the proposed resolution or the ultimate request.
So what it's saying is that, that there should not be required reporting of, by the teachers to parents, that this is, that I'm understanding this.
Right.
Okay.
I, I don't, I don't like the word mandatory in it, and I don't like the fact that if I ask a teacher, or the possibility that if I ask a teacher, because they spend, or administrator, whoever it might be, they spend majority of the day with a child, I don't have the ability to find out exactly what's going on, that's my problem. Because it may, you know, a protected, it points to a protected class right here, but that may may not be just limited to that, because, you know, the teachers, staff, you know, administrators, they're, they're human beings, and they have to weigh where they might pass, you know, where they fall on this, and, or, I'm sorry, not where they fall, but.
You know, where, where their priority ever.
Yeah, because, I, I mean, if I were a parent and I, I know something's going on with my kid, and my kid's not telling me, and I go to school, I say, do you notice this behavior, or do you know why it is, whatever the case may be, I want to be able to get to the root of the cause and help, and if I'm shut out of that process, then only the staff or my child knows what's going on, and as the parent I have more work to do to get through, because my child may not feel comfortable telling me, because I'm their parent, but they may view a staff member as more of a friend in some circumstances where they can vent that, and I understand the whole, the whole other side of this where it could put, put a child in jeopardy when this comes out, but again, you're, you're, it's a blanket law that excludes the circumstances.
But that's not, I think this is speaking at it in a different direction, what this is saying is, if a law were proposed to the mandatory reporting be enforced, NHSBA should not support that, so it's not saying it's mandatory that a teacher doesn't.
Yeah, you need it.
It's, it's saying that i- if the, if the law were proposed, like what this is saying, then if a kid confides in a teacher, they would legally be required to then turn around, pick up the phone, call you immediately. That's not, like, this isn't saying they couldn't have a conversation with it, it's saying that if that conversation took place between them and the student, they are required, sort of like mandatory reporting, right, like, there is certain requirements where if there's abuse, right, and teachers are mandatory reporters, they have to call that into DHHS or whoever.
And this has to do with mandatory reporting, Patty helped me on this. I understand that to be a, a blanket kind of requirement around things that are, for lack of a better word, crimes, right? And that what this is trying to do is to say, we're not going to criminalize somebody's sexual identity, we're not going to criminalize somebody who, um, you know, is not sure about, you know, where they land on some kind of a spectrum, for instance. Um, and my understanding also is that I believe that there are similar rules involving, you know, maybe our school psychologists have to abide by the rules and norms of their profession, where a student comes to you in your capacity as school counselor, school psychologist, whatever, um, and has a conversation about their, just their identity as part of that protective group. Not that they're being, you know, abused or anything like that, but just their identity, but they can't reveal that. Like, their own norms say they can't, they cannot be mandated to do that, so in a way, this is why I went to first resolution actually, because it sort of buttresses that, uh, the sanctity of that.
Yeah.
Where we say, we recognize that you've got professional norms and laws that you have to follow, when we are not going to support state laws that put you in a violent of state to your own, to your own regulations and normalized feature. Just doesn't make sense.
So, and I think I agree with Ken, because if you read the rationale, and then you read their alternative, I know the rationale came from the other school board, but they're like clearly saying it's hard to find good teachers and staff, and they have a lack of staff. But then they're like, well, we're gonna rely on the staff to uphold their culture, they're, they're saying that they're having a hard time finding psychologists in schools and filling those roles, but then they're saying, but we're gonna make sure that they're upholding their code of ethics and they're gonna keep that confidentiality, do you know what I mean, they, it's kind of condescending.
If, if they become mandatory reporters.
Correct.
Kids will not want to talk to them.
Correct, so that's why, that's, I, that's why I kind of like the original one. Other than their alternative resolution, do you know what I'm saying? I kind of think like the original one.
It's a little more direct.
It's a little more direct. I think the alternative resolution that they're recommending is kind of wish washing.
Yeah, interestingly, it adds some fluff, which usually the, their resolutions try to take a lot of fluff out.
This is the opposite problem.
Sort of, yeah, it's sort of placating a little bit.
That's what I see.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, of the two, um, I, I'm in favor of the first, the original resolution.
I would agree, and I also, I also think it's important to point out that is, supporting this resolution is supporting not changing, right, is taking a stand against those who would try to impose another law, so it's supporting this is not attempting to change anything. Are there any mandatory reporting laws on the books right now?
Just for a chat piece.
Okay. Yeah.
You can also, you have a very short, I see, you can support the resolution, you can vote to, to not support the resolution, or you can vote for the alternative. So you can have to go for the alternative language, just because you don't support that resolution.
Sandy, what did you say?
I said, we have to try and be twenty, that's what we can buy with parent. I think that's it.
Let's see if they'll give us.
Right, exactly. Yeah, this is too bad.
Wilson is happy.
Well, I'm just, I'm just trying to think what the and make a motion to support the proposed resolution number twenty-four.
Is there a second?
It's proposed.
Yes.
Alright, um, for any discussion? Alright, then all in favor of supporting the proposed resolution number twenty-four, please say aye?
Aye.
They opposed? Postitions? Aye. Alright. David?
Yeah.
You threw a couple of fifty ones in the hash here, compared to the last time, yeah?
Yeah.
So you've got your marching, you know.
I do. Start, no, I'll have to do this now, and just.
I think it's.
Oh, I was, I'm pretty surprised, I'm almost positive the last time that I did this, I had to, I think it was like in the morning, like the morning of, I was a panic, you sent me your notes.
Oh, okay.
I'm responsible sometimes, I think most times, but not.
Exactly. All of us.
Okay, sixty, uh, does anybody else have any comments on NHSBA resolutions from?
I hope they get the good sandwiches.
I hope so, the last time I went, I think it was not, it wasn't like, yeah, it might have been the end of twenty twenty, it might have been the end of the COVID year, however, I was in mask, and there was like pastries and coffee, is it?
Well, I need to be the bearer of bad news, but that's what they had last year.
Oh. And you're right, when they had wraps and sandwiches, I think sandwich stock or something, but it began about a hall street. And said, there's so many, like literally walking out and they're handing them, sandwich, handing us sandwiches to bring home. Okay, um, then we'll move on, sixty, revision energy agreement?
Did put, um, input from Dean, he did review the proposed contract, and I think no surprises that it is permissible, which we assumed would be the case, that they wouldn't come to us with something that wasn't allowed. Um, and he did note, which we've already discussed, that there was the, um, early termination fee in section seven point four. Um, the point that I think, I think it's Michael, made was your, if you are going to have your own project, you're probably not gonna need more than a year, or you won't have less than a year to plan that and make that happen, so giving a one year termination is probably not something we have to worry about. Um, so barring the comments that he made, it didn't seem that he was concerned over the couple of notes that he made, so it's, the board's discretion at this point, whether you want to go to sign the contract.
So, I'm gonna interject here, um, I think you all got an email from me that, uh, the Community Power, the Energy Committee, was having a meeting with the co, no. Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire, that's what it was, and, um, I spoke back and forth with, um, Richie was here for our presentation a little bit, um, and what he's going to do is, they, they, it's essentially this, uh, with the presentation they had on Thursday, I was only able to stay in for about half an hour, um, is similar to the revision energy contract, so what he's going to do is compare the two to see which one may be a better deal, and, um, I said, asked if it was okay with everyone here, that we maybe delay the vote on approving this um, contract at this point in time, until he gets back to me, which I think will be, you know, probably in another week, um, on that. But, uh, it's, it's up to you if you want to do that or not, so.
Well, like Patty pointed out, our, our first November meeting is late, so I guess a little bit of leave, I even would have been at the table. I will.
You don't have to be a vote at all?
Well, that's.
This week?
Yeah, that's true.
Uh, I meant to send that, the slides to you. Don't you know? Is it right?
We didn't have that?
Having us is. Ready? Still good on public comment? We, we need to see already?
Yes.
Wait. Um.
And you said Abby?
Mm-hmm.
Abby, yeah. Alright, so.
Also, one, uh, thing for Ken, uh, we'll get those, now we've got our first ones for this year, um, will be, was that in the agenda?
Oh, no, we weren't, it was, we had to put in.
So there's, uh, uh, Roman tracking in your, in the, uh,
Oh, okay.
In the drive, and we'll get that every month here on L, so it tracks where we are, how she budgeted for students, how Amber budgeted for students throughout the district, um, and, or, well, this basically tracks D, because it's revenue, the other schools are not, um, but shows where we are throughout the, kids' money total, makes. Um, so currently, I think we're at forty-six to the bed right now, so we can lose a few students before it impacts, yeah. And this is pointing up. Alright, um, the board has need to go into non-public session in Board of New Hampshire RSA ninety-one dash eight colon three roman numeral two, small f C and E. C is matters which if discussed in public would likely affect adversely the reputation of any person other than a member of the board, and E is consideration or negotiation of pending claims or litigation. On a roll, call a vote to enter non, quote, of eight forty-three, Melanie?
Yes.
Gene?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Melanie, yes?